At this time, we will call out June 14th School Board of St. Lucie County Meeting to Order. Welcome, everyone. It's a nice crowd out this June evening, and thank you so much for coming out to the school board meetings. At this time, we're going to ask you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and directly after, we will have our Treasure Hunters Kids at Hope pledge. Please remain standing. We will recite our Treasure Hunters pledge. As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you so much. Have a seat, please. Superintendent Gent, may we please have our special order of business at this time?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll call on Ms. Martin.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Superintendent Gent. At this time, we have two very special recognitions. The first are Odyssey of the Mind World Final winners from Fairlon Elementary. I'm going to play a quick news story, and then I have two of the coaches, Renee Hawkins, a teacher at Fairlon, and Anna Babcock, who will come forward to share a few words as well.
A major reward tonight for a group of elementary school students on the Treasure Coast.
Those seven students go to Fairlon Elementary in Fort Pierce. They just took home the top prize at the Odyssey of the Mind World Finals competition, competing against 60 teams from the U.S. and around the world.
That's a lot of competition. The competition requires students to come up with creative solutions to complex, long-term problems, and this is the first time that a team from a St. Lucie County school has won the competition. Congratulations. Shane?
Okay, Ms. Hawkins and Ms. Babcock?
Good evening. Thank you for inviting us to celebrate Fairlon Elementary's Odyssey of the Mind World Champions. There were so many instrumental people who helped us get here. We want to thank the Odyssey of the Mind Palms Regional Directors, who guided us through this whole process in September, to our Principal Heather Rickssecker, who was our problem solver and consistent supporter towards our journey to Iowa, our cheerleader, Dr. Gascoigne, thank you, to our Fairlon staff and families for their support and donations, our Windmill Point travel buddies, Lacey and Sean, thank you, Sean, for volunteering to drive the U-Haul truck all the way to Iowa. Thank you times a million to Morningside Elementary's Ms. Amy Spur. She met with our students on Teams After School every Monday since March to prepare them for their spontaneous portion of the competition. Mrs. Hawley, thank you for your continuous support throughout our journey and celebrating our victory with us. Thank you to our Odyssey of the Mind Fairlon parents. We appreciate you reading all my emails, texts, all the fundraising and filling out a million forms. Your support and commitment helped us get to Iowa.
I don't know if we should thank our high schoolers or blame this on them. We call them the teenagers. That's how we refer to them. Haley, as a fellow alumni of OM, your idea to create this team for your National Honor Society project was genius and possibly never done before. The way you gently guided the students through this process made your mother and I so proud. Anna, who's not here tonight, your speeches, pep talks before each competition were monumental and motivating. Evan, thank you for showing up for our students, even if there was going to be a really good surf that day. Your skills were valuable to our students. Teenagers, we were blown away by your commitment, leadership, and perseverance. Finally, to our students, we are so proud of your achievements. Through this experience, you all learned so many valuable skills that will follow you throughout life. Yes, the coaches gave you all the tools and advice you needed to compete, but in the end, it was you who performed with perfection and confidence against teams from the U.S. and around the world. Congratulations to our first St. Lucie County 2022 Odyssey of the Mind World Champions.
Yes, and if we could have all of the students come forward with the coaches, and then if we could have the board members, Superintendent, come down out front. Thank you, and once again, congratulations. Our second special order tonight is the recognition of an incredible young man, Robert Sansone, who is the International Science and Engineering Fair Grand Prize winner. And before we get into any of the details, I want to play just a quick video clip to give you some background information afterwards. The former principal from Fort Pierce Central, Ms. Mona Rae Buchanan, will come forward to share some information as well.
Hi, my name is Robert Sansone, and I am from Fort Pierce, Florida, in the United States. I tested my own design of a synchronous reluctance electric motor for use in electric vehicles because the motors that are currently used, they utilize rare materials in their design, which is unsustainable. Thus, my novel design is worth further investigation for possible use in more sustainable electric vehicles.
The winner of the $75,000 George D. Youngopolis Innovator Award is, from Fort Pierce, Florida, Robert Sansone.
I was just so excited. You know, I put so much energy, you know, into my project, my research. I'm just so passionate about what I do. So, you know, to have my research recognized on that level, it's just, it's just amazing.
Good evening, everyone. Robert Sansone, wow, there's so many things I can share about you. However, he is a junior at Fort Pierce Central High School. This impressive young man is a student in our Embry-Riddle Program. He is also a duly enrolled student. He is the president of the Key Club. He is the president and the first of in St. Lucie to be a candidate for the prestigious AP Capstone Diploma. This young man is a licensed drone pilot, and he is currently earning his pilot's license. His most recent and certainly most impressive achievement is his victory in the International STEM Fair. Robert won first place in his category, engineering and technology, statics and dynamics for his pioneering research to improve electric motor torque and efficiency. Robert plans to attend MIT. Robert, as you can see here, has earned $98,000. When you think about what he has accomplished, first, we need to give him another round of applause. This is an international, international award. And I'm going to share, Robert, because I've known you since you were a freshman, he is the most humble young man I have met in a very long time. And his parents, I know, are very proud of him, but I want to share on behalf of the Fort Pierce Central staff and his friends that we love you, Robert, and thank you so much, according to the kids putting us on the map again in regards to making us famous. And I say that because when Robert won this award, we received so many phone calls to get interviews from Robert. And Ms. Embry, our Capstone teacher, Dr. Bisfam, and Dr. Lannan from the Embry-Riddle Program, thank you for working with Robert. But truly, Robert, I have seen you in action, and the amount of hours you spent preparing for this, as well as not to mention, he was the keynote speaker here in the state of Florida, and I must say, we are all so proud of you. So, Robert Sansone, congratulations on behalf of Fort Pierce Central, St. Lucie County, and especially those students. You're making a difference, and you're leading by example. Thank you.
So, yeah, as you heard, I made a new type of electric motor for use in electric cars. And, you know, competing in the science fair, you know, through all the different levels, the district, the state, international, it was, it was an amazing opportunity. I got, you know, I got to spend a whole year working on what I'm most passionate about, the electric motors. You know, I got to compete, work on public speaking, you know, talk, I mean, each competition, I got to talk about electric motors all day long. And then, of course, you know, to have, you know, my research recognized, you know, such a high level in the international, and of course, win lots of money for college. It was, it was amazing experience, and yeah, I'd like to thank, you know, family, friends, teachers, everybody who helped me get there.
Can we have his teachers? Anyone else that's here with him, family? Anyone else here? Please come up with him. Is this mom coming up? Teacher? Mom? Well, moms are the first teachers anyway, right?
All right, thank you. Once again, congratulations, Robert. And that concludes our special orders for this evening.
I asked Robert what was next year's project. He's going to continue with the patent, the patent motors. So, great job. Madam Chair, if I can go ahead and recognize some folks right now as well, they were approved at the last board meeting, three new principals, and just go ahead and do it at this time. Jackie Lee, Oakhamic K-8, come on up.
Good evening, Chairman, Dr. Mills, School Board members, Superintendent Gent, and incoming Superintendent, Dr. Prince. It is an honor to be standing here, speaking to you, having been chosen as principal at Oakhamic K-8 School. My journey here has been supported by my loved ones, as well as those educators who inspired and guided me through my leadership experiences. My parents, Karen and Sam, are instrumental in my career. They continue to model hard work, perseverance, and a strong moral character. Years ago, when I first approached them with my first opportunity at becoming an administrator with high school hours, they did not hesitate when in that same exact conversation, I asked them to help me in the early, early morning hours with my elementary-age son. Not only this, every time I call upon them for help, whether it's to grill 155 hamburgers for my staff, set up for a school event, or just to listen when I need to talk, they come and they support me. They do this because they are proud of me, they love me, and they respect my role as an educator and the impact that I have on the community. My husband, Matthew, also serves St. Lucie County Schools as an assistant principal. Matthew is my best friend and champion. He supports and loves me through many hours of work and sometimes stress. We both share in our experience as educators for our community, and I am so proud of what we have accomplished, both professionally as well as personally. My son, Zachary, a very proud student of Fort Pierce Central, continues to love me when I'm not always physically present. He makes my job easy as a parent, honestly, because of his engagement in schooling and for the unconditional love he shows me. Professionally, I want to thank Mr. Gent and Dr. Prince for providing me a very unique leadership opportunity this year at Oakhamic, and for Mrs. Woolard for guiding me every, every step of the way. Thank you to Dr. Wild, who first hired me as a reading teacher at St. Lucie West, Ms. Rodriguez for her feedback on all aspects of school leadership, and to Mr. Frank for being willing to share his professional knowledge with me. To the principals that I have served under, Ms. Dan Pierre, who gave me the learning opportunities to become a school leader, Mr. Santa Brea, who demonstrated positive school culture, and Mrs. Wiggington, who inspired me to look at things from different angles. And finally, Mrs. Galloway, who arrived at Oakhamic just at the very right time for me. Just when I thought I knew what I needed to know, I continued to learn and grow under her leadership. She showed me that everything is not defined, and that with good sense and reason, a school leader can move a school culture even through a pandemic. She empowered me, and I cannot thank her enough for her friendship. Finally, thank you to my Oakhamic family, who are committed to serve the students of St. Lucie County, and who inspire me every day to become the very best leader for them. Thank you.
Going to Forest Grove Middle School, Ms. Kenesha Bobo. Is Kenesha here? There she is.
Madam Chair, distinguished board members, and Superintendent Gent, I would like to sincerely thank you for this opportunity. I am so honored to be appointed as the new principal of Forest Grove Middle School. I started my teaching career as a long-term substitute at Floresta Elementary, and I continued my educational and leadership experience at Longwood Elementary, Chester Amore Elementary, Dan McCarty Middle School, and St. Lucie West Centennial High School. I've had the privilege to work in all zones within this dynamic district, in all levels, K through 12. However, I'm fully aware that it is not due to my might nor by my power that I received this promotion. I give my Heavenly Father all the praise. I am and will always be a servant of people and the communities that they represent. I am faithful. It is because of that that I have been selected to lead, support, and develop a school culture that strives for excellence and commits to changing lives for the better. I would first like to thank my amazing husband, William, who has been my partner, advocate, and best friend since the age of 14, our four children, two of which are here with me today, Anaya and Franklin, both graduates of St. Lucie West Centennial High School, my daughter, Ebony, and son, William, both graduates of Treasure Coast High School, Ebony and her husband, Jabar, and the most intelligent and beautiful grandchildren ever, Jaden, Alani, and Riley are watching from Panama City. My son, William, is en route to Missouri for a job opportunity. I would like to thank my wonderful parents, Laverne and William Ramsey, who instilled in me a strong work ethic and a compassionate heart. I would also like to thank the current Principal of the Year, Ms. Felicia Nixon, who encouraged me to seek leadership opportunities, and as I transitioned into the role of an administrator, has continued to be a role model and mentor. She also taught me that it's important to learn through leading, and it's just as important to learn what not to do as it is to know what to do. I am forever grateful for my Centennial family and admin team, Ms. Wall, Ms. Mannion, Mr. Adair, and Ms. Olivera. Thank you for being collaborative, supportive, and for always finding a reason to laugh instead of excuses to complain. To thee, Ms. Andrea Teresa Colleen Popwell, who cautioned me not to say her government name, but she completed my evaluation yesterday, so I'm good. Thank you for being a pinnacle leader and being a woman of compassion and integrity, but most of all, for establishing a foundation of leadership that empowers others to become better leaders as well as better people. In conclusion, I would like to thank Mr. Dan Frank, who has been my ED for my entire six years of administration. I would like to thank Mr. Frank for his authentic feedback, constructive conversations, and leadership development, but most of all, for sharing 999 ways to disaggregate the same data. To all the students, educators, and administrators that I've worked with throughout the course of my career, I thank you for enriching my path. I thank you that you allowed me to be present in your journey. Thank you, and have a blessed evening.
And then finally, going to Morningside Elementary, Heather Belitho. Heather is here. He can follow you up.
Madam Chair, distinguished board members, and Superintendent Gent, and everyone in attendance today, I am so honored and grateful to be standing before you as the new principal at Morningside Elementary. You know, when I was little, I would line up my pound puppies, and I would teach them. I would bring home my homework, and we would practice, and I never thought that I would be standing here as a principal. And I think about my journey here, and I think about all the people who saw something in me that I didn't necessarily see in myself. And if I started saying thank you to people, I would inevitably leave somebody out, so I'm not going to name specific names. But I sincerely want to thank all of those people who saw something in me that I didn't necessarily see in myself. And when I think of leadership, when I think of the leader I want to be, that's what you try to do, right? You try to see the good in people, try to help them rise to something that maybe they didn't know that they could do themselves. And sometimes, that's corrective feedback. Sometimes, that's just saying, hey, have you ever thought of? And I think about that for our kids, when we have that power in our kids to help them rise up and become that. And I'm so blessed to have worked with leaders, to have worked with people who have helped me see that and develop that, and my goal is just to keep doing that and to get better at it. I do very much want to thank my family, because being a school leader, being an educator, it doesn't matter if you're a school leader or not, being an educator at all is a lot of work. And so, I'm so grateful to my husband, Wes, to my daughter, Elizabeth, to my little man, Alexander, who's sitting there, which is amazing. So, a huge thank you to all of them. And I really do just believe that when we do what's best for people, and when we do what's best for kids, everything else works itself out. So, thank you all so very, very much for this opportunity, and I am just honored and thrilled to be here. Thank you.
If we could have the family members of the three principals and their, their fan club, that they can all stand up and we'll recognize you as well. The family members and friends that came to help celebrate tonight, thank you for coming out. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, we do thank the family for showing up and being so supportive and friends. That was a huge group we just saw there. And I especially want to thank Matthew and William, and I didn't catch the other husband's name, but thank you so much for understanding because I know that, you know, wives, you've definitely have been very patient in many areas for them to be where they are today, I'm sure. So, at this time, we are going to move forward. Oh, before we move forward, I just want to also say, it's incredible, Odyssey of the Mind. This is our first time winning first place, I hear, for Odyssey of the Mind. And one of those young people was my, is my goddaughter that was here. So, we are so proud of our young people for taking us all the way to first place with the Odyssey of the Mind, and to that young man, Robert, as well, for that incredible work with statistics and dynamics, and what he is doing with his life, and all of our young people that are striving to be the best that they can be. Okay, we do not have CWA report tonight. No, no, I don't know, Ms. Vickers is not in the room, is she? I meant to say ESOL. We do not have, what am I trying to say here? It's the ESO report. David Freeman is not here tonight for that, and I don't believe that we have anyone here to give a report from CWA. I think I saw Christian Backer. Is he here this evening? Okay, Mr. Backer, please come forward, St. Lucie Public School Youth Advisory Council. And I believe this may be, is this your last meeting? You'll be here?
Yes.
Okay, please give us your report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Superintendent Gent. I would like to preface my speech by saying how much of an honor it has been to speak before you all for the past 18 months. I promised myself I would not get too emotional today, as it'll be my final report as chairman of the Youth Advisory Council. So, to get right into business, our council had its final meeting for the 2021 to 2022 academic school year on May 17th at Treasure Coast High School, where we celebrated the completion of the inaugural year of the Youth Advisory Council and our senior council members' graduation. Nevertheless, our council members remained eager to discuss issues affecting our student body, particularly the issue of bullying. We discussed the social pressures COVID-19 had on our students and their socialization, particularly their adjustment back to normalcy. We focused our discussion on proactive peer-to-peer intervention as opposed to reactive measures. This is just one of the few concerns our council members are eager to continue next year. As my tenure comes to an end, I would like to reminisce on the time I've had as chairman. I still vividly remember my first board meeting back in February of last year. I remember Mr. Mayo frantically tying my tie, and yes, as many of you saw, it did take this Yale-bound student over a year to learn how to tie his tie. I remember Mr. Mayo giving me a thumbs up before approaching the podium, and I remember how I felt. I felt empowered. I was empowered that in a dynamic and robust operation of a school district, there was room for student voice. I was empowered because my voice mattered. Over the past year, the Youth Advisory Council has dedicated itself to give each student that same feeling of empowerment that I felt. We have elevated students as participants in the assessment of district-wide needs. We have created a line of communication between district administration and the student body. We have been critical of district proceedings from a student perspective and have asked previously unconsidered questions. We have truly advocated on behalf of the 41,000 students here in the St. Lucie Public School District. Yet, of all our council's accomplishments, what has given me the most joy is fostering a collaborative environment that is responsive to the needs of all of our students. As any of our council members will tell you, they do not hesitate to tell me when I'm doing something they do not agree with. However, it is because of their critique and their receptive nature that we are able to establish a great deal, we were able to establish a great deal in a short period. As Mr. Mayo would say, they are the real deal. As any chairman of a newly-founded council or organization would say, my greatest concern has always been regeneration and making sure our council continues to operate in my absence. These past eight months have shown me that, that I am leaving the council in beyond qualified hands, not simply because of the passion and drive of our council members, but because of the dedication of our staff to our council's mission, staff who voluntarily drove to our meetings every month and who willingly gave up their time to support our students. With that being said, we expect to welcome our 2022 to 2023 Youth Advisory Council cohort in September. By November, we will have the next chairman and the vice chairman, who will guide the organization in its future development. We are excited to hear their ideas and explore their passions for the various student-based issues and concerns. On a final note, I would like to thank a few individuals who have made this past year possible. Behind every student, there are a dozen adults and teachers and mentors who have paved the way for the students and their successes. For me, it was Mrs. DeMayo and Mrs. Hawley. So, to them, I would like to thank you. Thank you for engaging in my circular inquiries of why and why not, and for guiding me through the complexities of the education system, but most importantly, thank you for teaching me to dream. To Superintendent Gent, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Prince, Chief Academic Officer Dr. Wild, and Ms. Martin, thank you for guiding this council and welcoming our presence and our voice. Lastly, it was because of the work of the Youth Advisory Council that my perceptions of my community changed. Two years ago, I was eager to move away and start the next chapter of my life. However, as I reached the end of my high school journey, I've seen just how many opportunities our school district has to offer. A community that champions each student and every, every day. This is the school district that taught the son of a construction worker and a teen mom that there's no limit to his abilities, that his race, socioeconomic status, sexual orientation, or any other precondition does not define the extent of his achievements. It is because of those opportunities afforded to me that I'm able to fulfill my dream of attending Yale. Thank you for all coming along this journey with me. Serving as chairman has been an incredible honor. Serving as chairman has been an incredible honor, and I hope I've made you all proud. While today marks my end as my tenure as chairman, it does not mark the end of youth empowerment. Our district's mission and our council's mission of each child every day continues. As always, I look forward to the possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Backer. You have done an excellent job this year as chairman of the Youth Advisory Council. We thank you again for your work.
Madam Chair, can I just quick, I don't know, I thought I heard you mention that you did change schools, all right? So we don't have to teach you how to pronounce Harvard anymore, right? So it's Yale, is it Yale? Yeah, I've heard of that school too. You are an asset to the county, buddy, you did us well, proud of you, we all are, thank you.
Very proud of you. Make my daughter proud, she's a Yale graduate. Okay. All right, at this time, we're going to move right into our consent agenda. We want to do the adoption of that consent agenda. I need a motion and a second to adopt. So move Mr. Ingersoll, second by Ms. Hawley. Superintendent Jen, may we have your recommendation?
Recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted. So moved.
Okay, well, wait a minute, we already did that, I thought. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so at this time, before we do that, are there any discussion items that we want to remove for the separate discussion? Okay, seeing none. Now we're going to do the vote. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any pose? Motion will carry, then five zero. Okay, we're going to move right along. And we will go right into our superintendent's staff reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm going to be very, very brief. Earlier today, we had a little surprise celebration for Mr. Bill Tomlinson, who is retiring in two weeks after 35 years, and I just want to publicly thank him for all of his service to the district. As you know, he loves the limelight and was happy that we had, I'm being sarcastic. Bill stands behind the shadows, he's our conscience, and just want to congratulate him on a tremendous career and what he's done to influence the lives of all of our children, but especially our very special students who need so much direction and guidance. So Bill, thank you so much for your support and for your contribution to our community and, most importantly, to our students. Thank you. Still got to come to cabinet tomorrow one more time. And lastly, just want to share that we received our third grade scores and the ELA scores, and we were one of only 11 districts to show improvement, even though this represents one of our greatest challenges that we have as a district and really as a state. The state declined, there were 11 districts that went, moved forward, we were one of them. Much more work is needed in there, but with a district as fragile as ours, it's important that we celebrate those successes. Especially, I just want to point out a couple of schools. Sam Gaines Academy with a 35% increase. CA Moore, up to 30, with a 13% increase. FK Sweet, 14%, Fairlon, 13%. Lon with 11, and there's several others as well, but just wanted to commend those folks. Again, as a fragile district, we were very concerned with this number because this group of third graders, really through the pandemic, the core foundation of one, kindergarten, first, second grade is really crucial. And as you can see, it had an effect statewide as on us, but we were able to keep the needle moving forward. So I just want to commend the schools, and again, we'll continue to work on that as that'll represent. I know one of the greatest challenges that we continue to face, and Dr. Prince will hit it head-on. And that's it, concludes my remarks.
Attorney Shadok.
Thank you, Chairwoman, members of the board, there is no attorney's report tonight.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Shadok. We will have our school board members report, but before we do, school board members, we do have some business before us. Tonight, we need to do the selection of the FSBA advocacy committee representative and the alternate. And we will need to take action on this as a description for those in our community as well as present here. The Florida School Board Association Committee leadership terms are from July 1st to June 30th, with a new chair appointments that take place in office on July 1st. FSBA, the Florida State Board Association, is requesting that each board select its advocacy committee representative and also its advocacy committee alternate, no later than August 1st. So this item has been placed on the board agenda for approval, and the advocacy committee will work, will begin work in early August and will be appointing its legislative and its federal subcommittee members by September 1st. In the past, Debbie Hawley has been the advocacy committee representative, and I have been the alternate. And we can continue with the two of us in those positions, or if there is a board member who would prefer to... Okay, I'll turn this way.
Been there and done that one, no.
Well, one thing we find ourselves doing, Debbie Hawley and myself, is that we enjoy going to the state board meeting. So we do not mind continuing in this position. I've already spoken to Ms. Hawley, and she's good with it, unless one of you would like to...
Ma'am, experience counts. You guys got that one.
Okay, so with that being said, then let's go ahead and do our vote for this. Can I get a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
So move Mr. Ingersoll?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kelly, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries five zero, so we have chosen our representatives. Okay, now for the board's comments. So let's start with Ms. Hawley and work our way down, and then we'll come back over this.
I can't tell you how exciting tonight is when you see the culmination of a year's work and you see administrators and students and staff recognized for all of their hard efforts. I'm beholden and in awe of each of you and just want to say my profound thanks for what you've done during this past year, past years. I hope you have some opportunity this summer for a little bit of rest and come back refreshed and ready. New challenges await us, and I'm sure that we're up to those challenges. So thank you to each of you for what you've done. Our kids are great, aren't they?
All one.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes, ma'am, I really don't have a report, I just want to say I enjoyed the rally we had last week at Treasure Coast High School. It was fantastic, very entertaining, as always. Are you going to be going in that business after this, or what? You could do it, you could do that. That's all I had, I just, I'm just astounded at all the awards and how great the district is doing and all these awards that we've been for the last couple of months, for the last year, even two, but I just, I'd hope it goes on, I'm sure that it will. And, oh, I guess I also have, I almost forgot this, I have a check here from the Port St. Lucie Downtown Lions Club. It's for the Port St. Lucie High School football team, it's like the auxiliary. The reason that I'm announcing this is they reached out, it was the athletes, the kids themselves, that went out to did this fundraiser, and I guess they contacted people, the kids themselves, not the administrators. And of course, the kids have to buy a lot of equipment, you know, football equipment and stuff. So they were impressed that the kids actually went out and they're going to donate $400 to the Port St. Lucie High School. I guess it goes to Chris Dent is the coach over there, so we'll pass that on down to Mr. Jen. And in fact, I think they have some, at the next meeting, I think they have some scholarships to give out. Can't be outdone by the Rotary, you know? They're both on the same page, they're both great.
Kiwanis.
Kiwanis, Rotary.
Kiwanis.
Kiwanis, yeah. Did that out of purpose. Anyhow, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Richardson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I had the honor and privilege to participate in the summer graduation, the very last graduation for Mr. Jen as a superintendent, so I was honored. I was truly touched by the students and their courage to overcome the challenges and obstacles in their lives to become a success story. One of our students recounted that she spent 90 hours on her academics in one week, making sure she had everything complete to meet the graduation requirements. She could see the finish line, and she wanted the prize at the end of the race, her graduation certificate. The theme in her story was the red cord running through all the stories I heard that day. They could finally see the light at the end of the tunnel. They made the decision, and they went for it. I was very proud of all our students for daring to believe that they could, and they did. Behind these successful students are teachers who would believe in them, or who believed in them and encouraged them, never gave up on them, and there were also administrators who knew the potential and giftings in all our young men and women. I have to make special mention of one such administrator, Mrs. Seal. She sat on the podium with us, and she was boo-hooing, boo-hooing, wiping away the tears from her eyes. We needed some Kleenex, and of course, we had none. Dr. Perry is unbelievable in how prepared he is. Dr. Perry, may I suggest that we add Kleenex to the list next time? Thank you. The mama bear came out in Mrs. Seal. It's quite evident that she loves her students. What concerns them concerned her. This was a momentous occasion, and she was in that moment. Mrs. Seal, thank you for being the teacher of teachers. Mrs. Seal was the principal at Performance Base Preparatory Academy and is now the principal at Southport, and I wish her great success. Thank you, parents. We know it takes a village to raise a child. Always take the time to tell your children how much you love them, and then show them. To all our administrators and educators who have experienced changes in their careers, I wish you great success. I would like to take this time to personally thank Christine Harrison, our administrative assistant. She keeps me on schedule and always works at getting me information that I request. I have never known Chris to have a bad day. Thank you, Chris. To everyone who has retired and is retiring, happy retirement. Mr. Tomlinson, you're going to be missed. I'm going to miss your very calm demeanor, the way you take time to explain and help me understand. The care and attention you put into making sure our student is in a better place, socially and emotionally, to learn and be successful. Thank you. Mark Woods, thank you for all you have done to keep our students and district safe. Mr. Jen, thank you for being the St. Lucie Public School Superintendent for the last seven years. You will be missed. A quote by Fred McFeely Rogers from Mr. Rogers' Neighborhood. Often when you think you're at the end of something, you are at the beginning of something else. This is just the beginning of your next chapter. Mr. Jen, happy beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. That was very refreshing to hear those words that you spoke. And of course, there is so many that have made such a tremendous difference here in St. Lucie County public schools. And we're going to miss all of you pioneers that are leaving now, and pioneers because you've done much to make a difference here. And it's good to celebrate the successes, and people need to know the hard work that has gone into those successes. So at this time, speaking of successes, I have a resolution of the School Board of St. Lucie County in honoring of Mr. Wayne Jen. And I am going to go down to the podium at this time, and I am going to read the resolution of the School Board of St. Lucie County honoring E. Wayne Jen. Please put your hands together for Mr. Jen at this time. I'm going to ask my vice chair, please come down with me.
Okay, okay. He didn't get a chance to give his report.
Oh, he didn't give his report yet? He'll give it after.
I'll give it after. Thank you, I appreciate it.
This is a resolution of the School Board of St. Lucie County honoring E. Wayne Jen. Whereas, E. Wayne Jen, a faithful and loyal educator for 45 years, served with honor and distinction as superintendent of schools in St. Lucie County, Florida, for seven years from July 1st, 2015, to July 1st, 2022. And whereas, E. Wayne Jen, whose talent, wisdom, and kindness will long be remembered, brought to his position immeasurable knowledge, care, and dedication that came from his personal experience as a teacher, basketball court coach, assistant principal, principal, Florida Department of Education principal in residence, area superintendent, assistant superintendent, chief of administration, and superintendent. And whereas, E. Wayne Jen exhibited knowledge, fairness, and enthusiasm for solving problems quickly and decisively paved the way for the development of a data dashboard, Gardner Safe Schools increased industry certifications by 164% in five years, raised academic achievement to the top one-third in the state, received St. Lucie County Best Places to Work Award for five consecutive years, had no failing schools, and spearheaded the district's historic overall graduation rate of 94.5%, ensuing the rank of seventh in the state of Florida. And whereas, E. Wayne Jen, as a respected and outstanding leader, worked to strengthen partnerships with civic, business, and community groups in St. Lucie County, led the effort to pass one Milich referendum in 2019, kept teacher salaries competitive, ensured that SROs were in all schools, hired counselors, increased funding for performing arts, and successfully brought students and employees through the COVID-19 pandemic with compassion, understanding, while focusing on the goal of teaching and learning. And whereas, E. Wayne Jen has consistently shown strength of character, dedication, courage, and prospective humor as a leader who not only showed the way, but walks the... but walks the way with his team, and who believes in putting people first, recognizing that each employee helps to create a shared understanding and mutual respect that they instill in every child every day. And whereas, the School Board of St. Lucie County, Florida, should honor and recognize E. Wayne Jen for his distinguished accomplishments on behalf of all children and citizens, and should formally be recognized for his efforts. Be it resolved by the School Board of St. Lucie County, Florida, in regular session duty-duly assembled that E. Wayne Jen, and he is there hereby honored and personally recognized for his exemplary service to all children, and be it further resolved that this resolution shall be spread among upon the minutes of the board formally to memorialize the distinguished and extreme ability of E. Wayne Jen, and that the original shall be presented to him. And witness thereof, the chairman and vice chair of the board have hereunto set their hand and sealed this 14th day of June 2022. We honor you, E. Wayne Jen.
Madam Chair, move approval of the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Harley.
Second, ma'am.
Second, Mr. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Again, we thank you, Mr. Wayne Jen, for your incredible achievements the past seven years.
All right, thank you. Anytime your name is mentioned that often, it sounds like I just was going back to grade school when I was in trouble. So, I do appreciate it. The key word in there is team, and they're right there. And I appreciate that very, very much. You heard my comments the other day directed to the principals, and to you all that were there as well. So, I appreciate that. I would cherish that. And I just wanna say again, thank you to the team, to the board members as well, and for your kind comments to our community members as well for the support. We don't always agree on everything, but that's our democracy. But we wanna listen and hear. And we're all here for one reason, and that's to make our kids successful and have a stronger community. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Jen. And we want to give recognition to Ms. Chris Harrison for writing the resolution up for us.
I asked her that, and she told me it was a collaborative effort, but... Thank you.
Okay. So, at this time, we're gonna take a picture. We'd like to take a picture with you, Mr. Jen.
Sure.
This is his last board meeting, if you haven't heard it already. So, we want to get a picture. We have three scheduled speaker request forms, and we have one unscheduled form here, speaker form. So, at this time, we will ask our scheduled speakers to come up, starting with Ms. Dale Galliano, please. Excuse me?
Ms. Darnold first.
Oh, you are a sharp cookie girl, okay. Do you have any comments, mister?
Good job, good job. Someone's looking out for me. How about that? Thank you, Ms. Galliano. Yeah, it was just really cool seeing some things today. I'm just like Ms. Harley. I'm just so excited seeing our students come to fruition. Dr. Pruitt and myself started Odyssey of the Mind some 13... I know she left 15 some odd years ago. And I never could get out of states. I always lost. So, congratulations to them. Robert, he leads one of the largest... Central has one of the largest key clubs in the state. It's gonna be hard to beat Miami. They have 400 students. But Robert leads a club of 200 students that are very active. Mr. Baca, thank you so much. Your inaugural year, or not inaugural, this is the second year, isn't it?
First year.
First year, it is the first year. For some reason, I've seen you so long and appreciate you and your leadership. I wanna thank you, and good luck to you at Yale. Remnant Core, the new high school, was voted on today. A local construction company gonna build the next high school. It's great to see us building for the next generation. Graduation, thank you, Dr. Perry. It was a success. Thank you, board members, for showing up. Mr. Tomlinson just left. First time the guy's ever left early in his life. Thank you, Bill! And I say all this 'cause it's lengthy is because the work that we do as teachers, educators, support staff, board members, lives on. And Mr. Jen, thank you for your 43 years of education. Forty-five, forty-five. I don't wanna cut you too, you're short. But what you have done has impacted lives beyond... You'll ever, you'll never know. And I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Okay, Ms. Dale, we're ready.
Good evening, Board. Dale Galliano, St. Lucie County. We have child protective statutes on the books. We have laws against child endangerment. Used to be kids would be off limits. Used to be everyone agreed with that. Now, it just seems there is a concerted effort to exposing kids more and more to things that are not age appropriate. That was said by our governor after a shocking video came out last week from Dallas, Texas, showing five-to-10-year-old kids walking the runway with drag queen performers at a gay bar, kids handing out tip money and striking a pose. It's all getting crazy out there, and we could be very much a part of it. And here we sit, waiting for a year to get pornography permanently out of our schools. Books that are sexualizing, destroying our kids' youth, mind, and future. Books that are against Florida laws. Then today, at the 11th hour, of course, I got my final decision, only to find out that nine of the 22 challenged books have been removed. Why? What part of illegal is not understood? What part of the definition of minor is not understood? Is it the interpretation, social-emotional, progressive socialism, indoctrination, persecution? What? I don't know. Yes, I do know that government moves slow, but I'm a patient woman. And the one thing that I do know for evil to flourish is only requires good people to do nothing. And that is what is happening here. An entire department doing nothing. There is evil in St. Lucie County school departments. This I know. And with a decision bringing more awareness to everyone that what is going on here. Why? To push for homeschooling, private schools? This is why. Good people do this to kids. So, you know, I have a good friend, so that you know. You know her, too. It's Senator Gail Harrell. Big heart, big concern for our kids, and a great legislator who has dedicated 22 years to this state. Thing is, right now, of all the paperwork that I gave everyone here last month, she has it now. So, now this department knows, is known, not only it's in her hands, but in Tallahassee. Books that have been step by step how to inform our kids on suicide, killing a teacher, rape, incest, pedophilia, body shaming, school shootings. You know all that I read. You know all the quotes that I did. So, now I have my last hurrah with five pages with 13 of these challenged books remaining on the media centers. Yes, they're gonna have all sorts of different things that go with it. But we've lost the process. We're throwing the baby out with the bathwater with this. To say that I'm disappointed would be kind of understating it. But I know this has happened, and that things change. And that's what I'm looking for, change. I'll be here. Dr. Prince? Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'll see you again soon. Because for all of us must appear before Christ to be judged by Him, and we will each receive what we deserve according to everything we have done, good or bad, in our body of life. I know how I'll answer. How about you? Thank you.
At this time, after all have been said and done, we are going to adjourn.